Kirby Winn.
Lloyd Johnson.
Michelle Adams.
Ben Keel.
Tom Marsler.
Wayne McCormick.
Wendy Manson.
Heidi Gillian.
Deb Belter.
All right, item number one, the 2020 census complete count committee.
So, we gotta get going on this, and as you remember when you talked to you, the city council have to find people to do this. You have to find volunteers. And I talked to him today, and at first I remember him saying to us, so I had that in my notes when we did this before, that he said two to three, and he said today now he's saying three to five people were the Montrose, City of Montrose. And just a couple of things that he told me, what their purpose is, is they're going to, they want them to go to different civic events. They can go to, they can go to the public library, city festivals, church service, and other public events or activities. And it almost sounds like they actually set up a table, and they sit there, and what they do is they give information on the US Census, they answer questions about the information. For example, I was telling the group before some of you came that there's some concern about information that is on there, like, are you gonna ask for my social security number and more private information? And you don't have to fill that out. So this person would educate them on that. And then just encouraging them to complete, complete the forms. The training for it is two to three hours. I'm pretty sure it's online training. So, that's also a big commitment. And he said possible candidates from other communities that would make, first of all, they have to be trusted and respected in the City of Montrose. And he said possible candidates can be organization leaders, church leaders, not necessarily the pastor, but people that are on the church boards, that are leaders in their congregation, school board members, or volunteer firefighters, was what he recommended. So, I just put this in front of you because we need to get some people. And you guys need to vote and accept a complete, establish a complete count committee. So I don't know if any of you have any ideas of anybody that you think would be...
The people I talked to all ran for me like I had the plague.
I know, I don't know.
(laughing).
I did talk to a couple of people at the church. One is just too busy, the other one wants more information. And then, there's another recommendation for one of the members of the House of Grace. So, now that I have a little more, I can reach out to them and see.
What about like Doug Birding, or, I don't know, if he would be, I mean, he's been here a long time, so I'm thinking, I don't know if he'd be interested or not, but I'm just thinking something that's been here a long time and a lot of people know.
You want me to talk to him?
You want to shoot him an email, maybe?
Great. Trying to think of who else has been here a while that, maybe from the fire department, I wonder if we could get, somebody like Willie or Joan Bauer and Schmidt that have been here for a long time.
Yeah, they've had two good ones there.
Willie, yeah.
Yeah. Or Connie Nelson.
Connie Nelson.
Maybe. You know, a couple of them, they've been here, you know, the three of them
have been here forever, so a good people know. I mean, I'm just trying to think of some people that we know that other people would kinda know who they are.
Terry O, brother, she knows everybody.
(laughing).
Yeah.
Or Chad.
No, no, the fire department, they have a lot of new people there, I suppose.
But even if they were new, it'd be okay, too, if they're willing to, a lot of them, the fire department seems like they put in so much time already that they just, you know, they, to try to give up more hours. So Willie, and what's his wife's name?
Joan. And Bauer and Schmidt.
I don't even know how to spell that, but you can give that to me at another time. That's four. Just put your thinking caps on, and as you're talking to people, just start asking people if they'd be interested in doing, doing it. We were talking that there isn't a lot of civic events that they could go to. There's a few, but, and then, make sure you remind them that it is two to three hours of online training. And I think we can get them set up here if they wanna come and do it at City Hall, if they would wanna come and do it. Then maybe we could do them all at the same time. I could stay after work one night and do it.
Yeah, then if they got questions, it'd be a good thing they all together.
So maybe that's what we'll do.
That's why I was thinking like Doug and Joan, because they both do elections for me, so they do online training with elections, so they, you know, I do all that kind of stuff. That was why those two kinda came to my mind.
Well, who else was on the election judges?
Gloria Peju, who lives in Buffalo now. She used to live here in town, but she's gone. Jolene Lumen, who used to live here in town, and she lives in Delano, so she's not in the city anymore. Doug.
And then Greg.
Greg Uhlman was on the last year, or two years, last year when we had elections.
Is he one that you think I should... Rue was on the elections two years ago.
Yeah, more than that. Cause last year she ran, so she couldn't be on it. So, had to be before that, even until three years ago. Whenever I had the last one before that.
Right.
Okay. So as you talk to people, tell them that that's what we'll do. We'll do training here. I'll sit in on it, so I kinda know what the scoop is. Okay? So that's why that was on the agenda, just as an FYI.
All right. Kirby, water tower.
I'll just kinda bring it up to Deb, asking what we're gonna do with the water tower when we shut it off. And I thought that we could just keep it up. After we shut it off, we just keep it up, cause it's kind of, that's the middle of town, it's been there for God knows how long. I mean...
Go ahead.
I don't know what that would take.
We're not gonna be shutting it off for a couple of years.
Well, right. I'm just, I'm just saying after that, cause we're working on building the new one.
Right. But it's got lead paint on it, so. It costs a fortune to get the lead paint off of the inside now, which we'd have to do.
Was it like $700,000 to tear it down, or something like that?
No, it's, it was $400,000, $400,000 to rehab it, six to $700,000 to build a new 100,000 gallon, and $800,000, I think, to nine, to build a 250,000 gallon like what we have out there.
Cause in the sand bus, you have to capture all that.
It's a tear down job.
Uh, they can do that, they can do a tower in a day.
I think that was part of building the new one.
Right. They get up there with a couple of torches, and they cut it and blow it in pieces. But it's all hazardous, cause it's got lead on it.
The other thing was, is that the fire department would expand that direction and put on training, removal processes.
Yeah, and then they wouldn't have to worry about rebuilding another.
For a while, yeah.
I mean, you can do whatever with it, but you always gotta look at all the costs.
Well, right. And that's why I wanted to bring it up, of what it would take if we were to look at keeping it around.
I mean, if you kept it, would you leave it look the way it is? I mean...
We almost have to paint it.
Yeah.
But there are a couple of communities that do save it for historical reasons.
Right. Somebody to paint those, it's pretty much a pain.
And the fire department, would there was the potential of expanding there, too?
They need that. We talked about that already. They need it very badly. Well, you're gonna buy a house, we could put it in your backyard. What does it cost to move it to Kirby's backyard?
Hole's free today.
You could take the top part down, the tank part, and put a couple of pedestals on and put it in the park. You know, you could do something like that.
After it's painted and everything.
Well, then we could just paint it ourselves if it was down there.
Seal it up.
Something to go up there.
I just think it'd be something kinda cool to just keep around.
Fill a lot of room up every day.
Anything else on that? No. All right. Job descriptions?
Okay. So, you voted after September 9th, you need to make this city administrator, so we do have to change my job description. I included that for you. As you can see, there is very minimal changes. It was just the title, the point range, and we have to do that for comparable work reporting. Every city has to do the current range of comparable work reporting. And then who I supervise. And I did put city clerk treasurer here, but we have to talk about that yet today. Public Works Director, and then Administrative Assistant. So that is the first one. Then, the next one is the Public Works Director, or Director of Public Works, that job description. And that one just gets changed to reports to City Administrator, and works with City Administrator. And that was it for that one. And I would, what I want you to do is just discuss them today, and then just give me a direction of how you want me to report with the job descriptions. And then, the last one is the Deputy Clerk one. I gave you a copy of the city's ordinance and state statute. The city is a, we're planning a type of government that says that we have to have a City Clerk Treasurer, so I just proposed that we change that to City Clerk Treasurer, change the points, and then just some minor changes, works with City Administrator, reports to City Administrator, works with City Administrator. So those three job descriptions, I don't know if you wanna discuss that first before we move on to the financial budget part of it.
I have a quick question on exhibit C.
No.
When we had Barb here, Barb was the City Administrator, correct? Was her title?
Yeah, well, she was Administrator Clerk Treasurer.
Oh, she was Administrator Clerk Treasurer, okay.
Yeah, she was all the above.
And the only thing I'm gonna say about that is, the City Administrator position doesn't really have any clerk treasurer duties in it. Wendy's doing all the clerk treasurer. She has been for 22 years.
Okay. I was just asking, cause I know, you know, Barb was City Administrator, and I guess I remembered that it was slash clerk treasurer.
Which is another option, if you, so that's what we wanna discuss today. What, in that, in that, in any of the situations where it says City Administrator or Clerk Treasurer, I'm signing off on forms that she's doing. And so, I can do that, and I do review that before I sign off, but she really should be doing that. She should be signing those
Seems to me, though, when we, when Barb left, we really didn't need a City Administrator, but there was some kind of a rule that we needed a Deputy Clerk.
You have to have a City Clerk by statute. And we had a Deputy Clerk because we didn't, we, so she was City Clerk Treasurer, and then she became Administrator Clerk Treasurer. So the reason I was Deputy Clerk is because in the absence of a City Clerk, you have to have somebody to do it, which is the Deputy Clerk. But if she's Administrator and not Clerk, in my absence as Clerk, she can be the Clerk, cause she's the Administrator. So you just need somebody to be in that absence, basically is what it is.
I don't really need the title.
As long as it's somebody in that, as long as it's specified that it's, there can be the acting Clerk. And I think Administrator can be the acting Clerk.
But the duties pretty much are almost the same, what you're doing right now.
Which are clerk treasurer duties. That's the only reason I brought it up.
The point range doesn't change anything.
Oh, yeah.
Pay away is.
Quite a bit.
That's my question.
The point system?
The point system. Where does that come in for pay?
The only thing it does is it removes my cap.
So then, therefore, you could get a 2% and 2%?
Yep.
Yep. And then, in talking with our attorneys today, we don't necessarily need to make the change. We can continue with Deb as a City Administrator slash Clerk Treasurer. We don't need to make the change transferring the Deputy Clerk to the Clerk Treasurer.
I feel that way, too. We really don't need to make that change.
So you would change now your job description and my title to City Administrator slash Clerk Treasurer?
If that's the way we're going back to the way it was back when we had an Administrator, that's what the title was.
Okay, just, just know that under that job description, though, there is really, the Clerk Treasurer duties are being done by, by Wendy, but it's up for discussion through you guys. So that's why I brought it.
Right, but weren't the duties being done by Wendy as a Deputy Clerk back 22 years ago when we had Barb as a City Clerk Treasurer slash Administrator? So it hasn't moved? Yeah, yeah.
Really hasn't changed.
The only thing I would do then is take, like we said, take the cap away toward right now. Wendy currently gets the 2% COLA, but capped at her wage increase.
That scales, that scales shift every year?
Nope.
It doesn't? It's fixed?
Nope. So I just only get a 2% forever. I don't get, I don't get a 4% increase or Did you have something, Deb?
I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, I, I don't know how many years you've been doing this, but I mean, I would, having a salary cap, I guess I've never, I understand them, and, but yet, I'm not in favor of them. I mean, just there's...
Yeah, but that's in the union contract, so.
I know, I know. I, I just...
It can be changed in a couple of years, it's not right now.
It didn't get changed last time. It would stay the same. Because they won't change it.
Then where did the rule come that we have to have a City Administrator all of a sudden?
We don't have to have a City Administrator.
No, I, I know, that's why I can't figure out why we can't get along just the way it is.
Well, we've already voted now to make the City Administrator, so.
Well, I think we can change that.
I think the vote was to have a City Administrator with no probation, under the stipulations that, how did you word it? To final logistics or something to that back?
To agree on terms.
Right. So it's been voted on, but not completely done yet. Right. Am I right on that? Everybody's so quiet.
No, I'm gonna have to think on the City Clerk Treasurer thing, cause that's a new,
So then, with the City Administrator, are we all okay with the change in that? Just adding Deb oversees Wayne and Heidi, and changing the point system, right?
She oversees Heidi now, right?
Right, but she doesn't oversee Wayne, which is a change.
And so you'd have Wendy and Wayne and Heidi.
Mm-hmm.
Then who's, who's in charge? Who's the boss?
Well, Deb, Deb is.
Suppose, right now, Wayne is his own boss?
Right.
Deb is.
So maybe we should abolish that job, then, as long as it's gonna go under the...
Abolish what job?
The Public Works Director.
Why would, what's gonna be there?
Why would you have to abolish?
So you're gonna give Deb the responsibility?
Well, he's supervisor. Why'd you need a supervisor for a supervisor?
Well, he's still gonna supervise his people.
Every city that has a City Administrator, they, they are in charge of every department, no matter how many departments. City of Delano, they're in charge of the liquor store, they're in charge of the Public Works Department, they're in charge of water vehicle, they're in charge of the Parks Department, they're in charge of everybody. It's just the way it is.
Sometimes the police departments, all of that stuff.
And it used to be that way here. It's my understanding that it used to be that way here, but when Sean changed the job description, he did not want to, I'm gonna say it, basically answer to a woman. So they, he had it changed. And it's, it's true.
I know, I know, it's true.
He didn't wanna answer to a woman, and so he had it changed. And that doesn't mean, I don't know how to run a waste fire treatment plant, or I don't know how to make certain decisions.
That's crazy.
It's sewer. Wayne, that's Wade's expertise. I'm just making sure that that stuff gets done. And it gets done...
Efficiently.
Isn't that getting done now?
It is, yes.
Yes.
So, I mean, I don't know, why, you know, why the change?
Because right now, if there's any issues that you want done immediately, because he's under your supervision, he would have to bring it to the City Council. If you put me as his supervisor, Wayne and I can work together to get things done immediately. It doesn't have to come back to the City Council.
Well, I think Wayne can work that way, though. You know, if I come in with a problem and I speak, you just go out and take care of it, you know?
I think she's more saying if I don't do it.
Well, you're gonna do it, aren't you?
Yeah, but I mean, if there's something comes up, I don't have to go before the Council. I can just go.
Yeah, I'm not a...
You're not, you're... You don't go before the Council for a lot of things, no. I mean, we shouldn't have to. I mean, that should be your job.
Well, certain days, you know, big money stuff, like...
Well, yeah, the big money stuff, yes. That's different. That's gotta go out for bids usually, everything else. That's gotta go through.
Well, currently, right now, Wayne actually goes through the Personnel Committee, and then if Personnel Committee feels that there's more that needs to be addressed, then it goes to full Council. But what it would eliminate is, it would not have to go through us, it would go straight to Deb, since she's here around the block more than we are, so. I'm okay, I'm totally okay with that, all that changes. The only thing is, is we still don't have all the logistics taken care of on, on everything else with moving your title, so, while making you City Administrator. What's not figured out, Deb? Well, it's, as of 2:00 today, we haven't figured out everything in regards to the union, a contract that may potentially have to be done with the union. We haven't all discussed the pay increase.
The union, she can be in the union.
But City Administrator is not in...
Yeah, so you just have to do like an addendum, is what I talked to...
Right, and which is stuff we don't have done. So, we don't have all of the logistics on that done yet.
We gotta see what they advise.
And with the advice of our attorney, City Administrator's not a union position.
What was before?
It shouldn't have been.
That's what asks me is, is managerial, is a managerial...
If you look around to other cities, no City Administrators in a union. So, again, that's discussions that we need to figure out.
Yeah, there used to be discussions about Deputy Clerks being in the union, too. It's not a supervisor.
Yeah, it's considered a supervisor position because they acted place in a clerk. That was already decided six years ago.
Well, legal is... So that would have to be changed from a union contract, is that?
Legal is saying the supervisor, you know, should not be supervising, shouldn't be any union supervising someone who's in the same union. And so, like 99% of the City Administrators have an employment contract rather than are members of the union.
So that must be the difference in the, than the legal people, because when we set this all up originally, we had a firm that was called Gallenter, Hanson Gallenter, or something like that. Her name was Pam Gallenter, and they do only, basically all they do is employment contracts, like through the union and stuff. They're like a, whatever you call SORN. What do you call SORN? A...
Personnel Attorney.
Personnel Attorney, whatever. And she's the one who worked, she was the city's attorney, who worked with the union to put us all in it. So, it must be a difference of opinion in attorneys, then, because she's the one who originally set it all up, you know, she was the city's attorney. I don't know if you were, I think it was right before you guys got on.
Yeah, but snuck right in there, you think it was that fall? Right before we took over.
I think it started right like in August, July or August, or like June. And that's who they appointed, the city appointed them.
Well, I think you all know where my position was on the union when I first was running for City Council. I was in disbelief in the city that our size had two unions. However, I have since learned the reason why there are unions, and it's for protection of the city staff. So, you know, as long as there's some protections built into a contract to protect city staff from, I have the floor at the moment, like, if there's something built into an employment contract that protects city staff from, you know, just extemporaneous firings, or, you know, to alleviate some of that fear.
As I've said many times, the, the fear is, there shouldn't be a fear if you're doing your job. I mean, I, I get what, what you're saying totally, but if you're doing your job, there shouldn't be a fear. I mean...
Well, when you have an employment contract, an employment contract has terms for dismissal, it has severance, it has all that stuff in it. So, I mean, somebody does something serious, you know, malfeasance or misappropriation of city funds, that's grounds for termination. But if they accidentally throw away a three-quarter used number two pencil, they're not gonna get fired because, you know what I mean?
Right, yes. That would be so.
I'm being facetious, but you know what I mean?
Yes.
And, and other cities that I have worked in, now that you bring that up, they do have contracts. The City Administrators, they have contracts.
Mm-hmm. That's what we mentioned at the September 9th meeting. But there's been no contact since with the unions to get all of that figured out. So, we're kinda here. I'm not sure what the point is.
So, two things need to happen, now, I guess. The union needs to be notified, and an employment contract needs to be written with all the terms and conditions. You know, who writes that?
Did SORN say, because Sheila, I think, emailed SORN. Did he say, he talked to her? Cause I'm almost sure I sent her...
No, I believe from the conversation with Deb on the 11th, James was in on that.
I had contacted James with all the info, and he was at the meeting.
Yeah.
So, I think, I've had no contact with SORN.
That sense, right?
And, and I've only, if I've emailed James, I've CC'd Sheila on it, too, so.
And I think it was the 12th or Thursday, I believe, is when she had, was going through, and she stopped in. And I thought she was going to, in fact, she's, she copied me on an email to Campbell Knutson. So I know she's reached out to him.
Yeah. Did you hear anything today, Tom?
I didn't. So I know she's reached out to them to, to work on stuff with him, so. Maybe SORN's looking at the stuff.
So who do you recommend that I get a hold of, or what, what step do you want me to do next?
You would have to talk to Sheila. In regards to, because this technically, from our attorneys thinking, the City Administrator is not in the union.
Is that from SORN?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering that, I mean, I think Sheila might have reached out to James, but I'm sure she, he sent it over to SORN, so. Maybe he's looking at the stuff.
Maybe. But, yeah, he didn't mention anything to me or Tom today, when we talked.
That's what it sounded like.
And as far as these job descriptions, what would you...
Well, the only thing changing on Wayne is that he now is overseen by Deb, or City Administrator. The Deputy Clerk, that's still under discussion, is what I'm taking from this, right?
Should a person in charge of Wayne know, have qualifications also? I mean, if Wayne's gone for a month or so, then who's gonna do it?
Well, when you have a City Administrator that's responsible for the police department, doesn't mean that they have to be a former police member or...
No, but you don't need a certificate for, for that either.
So you don't, police...
But for, but for his job, you need certificates for water and sewer and...
Police officer?
You have to be, or train the police officer then at Public Works. Sorry, Wayne, I didn't mean to put it that way.
No, no, no.
I, I will say that my son went and got a four-year degree in law enforcement, and he had to go into Skills and Alex for three months, because you have to have certification to be a police officer, absolutely.
There'd be probably change in that.
Every city has, every city has a City Administrator that's in charge of all the parts.
Because if something happens to, I'm sorry...
No, go ahead, go ahead.
If something happens to Wayne, we have other, Dan, we have Dan, we have other people on staff that are versed in.
And I did take the time on Friday to go through the list that Deb gave us with the populations and all that kinda stuff, just to check and see how many full-time employees they have. In the population of 3,000 to 5,000, is I think what I went off of. And we're writing the same, but a ton of them have Public Works and their fire department, as well as their police department. The City Administrator oversees all of them. So the City Administrator does not know anything about fire department and/or police department. So, I, I don't know. So, I, I don't know. To have to know, sorry, to have to know the public works department, I'm sure she knows some of it, but not all of it.
To be honest with you, with my experience with cities I've worked in, I do know some.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't expect you to be, you know, be able to jump right out there with Dan down at the plant and run it for a day.
Get your wages on.
Yeah.
I wouldn't expect, no. But I mean, to oversee them, I mean, have an understanding of the job, yes. But know every nut and bolt and any, you know, inside and out, no. I mean, yeah. So, I mean, my bosses when I, where I've worked before, didn't know everything of my job, couldn't do everything that I was able to do, but had understand, general understanding of it, yes.
My boss didn't even have an understanding of what I do.
There you go. I think we all had experiences like that.
Right.
There you go.
So, I think that this all needs to come back again, once we have more information from Deb with the union portion of it. The only thing I think that we can move forward with is changing Wayne's position, not changing his position, but who he is, answers to on a day-to-day basis. And then more discussion on the deputy clerk.
Can we get that done for the next council meeting?
I doubt it, that's only three weeks away.
Something like that. Or the next workshop, which is a month away.
We're gonna drag this thing out till two thousand nine.
Well, it was...
The personnel committee also need to meet with SORN and discuss putting the contract together as well.
Yep, yep. Do you want me to reach out to SORN to set something up?
Sure.
I could do that. Along with you and Sheila?
Sure.
Does that work for everybody else? That's good? Okay, I'll do that. Any other discussion on any of this?
The other thing that I had on here was discussing my wages. We did talk as a personnel committee and you were going to make a recommendation at this workshop, so I mean, that's something that we can make a decision on.
Well, we talked about that one too on September eleventh and currently, I don't remember what it was, the discussion was when we hired Maggie, we originally offered her sixty thousand. We ended up going with sixty-three thousand, I believe, in to coincide with what Wendy was making at the time. And then when she left, she was at seventy, no, sixty-nine something, I believe, I don't, somewhere in there. And then we hired Dale at sixty-three thousand again. When he left, he was at sixty-eight and some odd change. Logistics, we get down to Deb when, just to confirm, Kirby, when we did hire Deb as an intern, we hired her at twenty-five an hour. When we brought her on full-time, we brought her on at twenty-nine an hour. She's now at, what, thirty-sixty? She is looking to go up to thirty-seven an hour at thirty-six hours a week, still continuing to have her Thursdays off, which I don't think any of us really have a problem with because she, that's for at least, what, another year and a half or so, possibly two years because she takes care of her grandkids.
You're putting in, how many hours a week are you putting in?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Well, how many are you scheduled for, but how many are you actually putting in?
I think forty.
Well, forty plus.
I put in eighty-six point seven-five in the last two weeks.
I just, I didn't know that question.
Is, yes.
So, you're pretty much full-time.
Mm-hmm.
So, in all reality, it is what, a five or six thousand dollar difference from what we left Dale, from what we hired Dale? What was the number?
Basically, it's like a thousand dollars from what you said from the last two people.
Yeah, from what Dale left, what you will be at, it's not even too burning.
Like, no, it's thirty-seven dollars an hour, that's the top.
Well, she was asking anywhere from thirty-five to thirty-seven.
Yeah, I know, but so...
No, I did a compilation of the twenty-one cities that have our population between two thousand to, was it thirty, three thousand ninety-nine? And out of those twenty-one cities, what we would pay Deb, she's at the very bottom of all the cities for city administrator.
So...
But I know that see that seven dollars is quite a jump at one time.
But like I...
Now, whatever she's making now, if we're gonna promote her to this job, she should just slide over to that job if her pay is in that range or above the low, instead of giving her the full seven dollars an hour.
Why, why do we not reward people that work for the city? Why do we constantly have a punitive attitude toward people in the city? I don't understand why.
Well, I'm not having to have to. I'm just telling you.
But you hire, you hire, what's her face?
Maggie.
Maggie at thirty-five dollars an hour with absolutely no experience.
None.
None.
Fresh out of high school, from college, college.
And she's asking for thirty-seven with how many years' experience? Twenty-five years' experience.
When we, like I said, when we brought on Dale at sixty-three thousand, he left under six months with a five percent increase up to sixty-eight thousand, some odd change. Deb will be getting sixty-nine, two sixty-four with a difference of one thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. So, thirteen hundred bucks difference between what Deb is asking and what Dale was at with twenty-five years' experience, twenty-five plus.
Even if you calculate that as a full-time position, like, she's like fifth from the bottom out of all the cities. So, it's not like we're...
Well, somebody's gotta be at the bottom.
It's not...
We don't want Montrose to be at the bottom of everything.
You know, that's why Montrose has the reputation it has because it's always...
Yeah, it's not just that. Montrose has had a reputation for overpaying the office staff.
But it's only thirteen hundred dollars difference from what we paid Dale, thirteen hundred dollars more, it's not even, just rounding up, from what we paid.
I have no problem with increasing the pay.
Right, because Dale was, oh, boy, we don't want to go there, but...
I would say we can come in here and we, I feel comfortable that I'm getting an honest answer. I don't have to hear the high school drama, it's straight to the point. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the, with promotion and pay.
Do we need to go with a motion? Do we do that?
No, no, no.
Oh, we can't do that because we're a workshop, we're a workshop. Just make a recommendation to move it forward.
For the contract, though.
Yes.
I just need to know because if we're gonna work on a contract, I need to let SORN know.
Yep.
Well, I think the recommendation should be that your employment contract include the starting salary of thirty-seven dollars an hour.
And you can take a hold on that, just no motion or just...
We can just hold it.
You're a favorite of it.
I'm in favor of that.
You wanna repeat that, Tom?
No, I said, I make a recommendation that as she puts together her employment contract, that the starting pay be at thirty-seven dollars an hour.
Okay, not retroactive like it says here.
Well, until when she was voted in as city administrator, it would be retroactive to that, which would have been the last council.
September ninth.
Yeah.
Okay.
How do you pass that?
And that was already factored in the budget, right? You just, you left it at, when the salaries are higher before, you left the budget at that?
All right, so we'll reach out to the attorneys in our union, union reps, to get all of the rest of this figured out.
Okay.
All right, Wayne, street sweeper.
Well, we were doing our budget this year. I didn't do any seal coating because we had some street work that we were gonna do. And we ended up having enough money to do the street projects, so we got seventy, what left?
Seventy-five or seventy-six thousand.
I think we had seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand something.
We had seventy-five thousand budgeted, I believe, for a street.
So, I've been dealing with three different companies on sweepers. And one company has refurbished one that's ready to go. And another company has two of them that need to be refurbished. They wouldn't be done till spring and they're not getting all new parts. They're getting adjustments and that's about it. And one is like sixty thousand, the other one is thirty, and they're older and they're all beat up. And then the other one is a mobile type sweeper. You drive around like a truck and they're new and they're three hundred plus.
How much is that one?
Three hundred plus for a mobile truck mount. The one I'm looking at, they're gonna guarantee for six months and I totally want to use it for like three to five years and trade it in for a new one possibly.
Should be worth about the same if we...
Well, I'm hoping if we keep up the rooms and everything on it.
How many years do rooms last?
Uh, depends on how often you sweep.
And how much down pressure you have on them and can you reverse them once?
No, no, what they do is they're wearing a cone, this rear room, used to run a sweeper just like that. And then we're off to a cone because you're driving down the edge of the road, the center of the road's higher around. And it wears that one edge down and you're always crooked. But you can adjust for that by dropping chain links. And then this sweeper too, you can sweep on the passenger side or the driver's side when you're down the street either way. Because you're, there should be a steering wheel on each side and a room on each side.
And you were gonna see if they would like warranty the thing like for two months, the rest of this year, and then the rest of it next year or something like that?
Yeah, they said they'd come with a six-month warranty. And we're gonna use it maybe a month this fall, clean up leaves, and then it sits all winter so that it goes on warranty. I'm gonna see if they'll hold it off till next spring, like four months.
Yep.
We clean up in spring, see if anything goes on.
Turn it back on in like March timeframe.
They're gonna be here tomorrow on the demo though at eight o'clock. Like to have a couple councilmen come and take a look over here. Anybody's available?
You available?
When?
Tomorrow morning, eight o'clock, eight to ten, so it'll be about two hours.
I'd like to have been here, but I don't think I'll be here.
We also talked about, right now, Wayne buys only salt because you do the roads with because if you put sand on it, washes down into our catch basins and you end up having to have them sucked out. So, if we buy a sweeper, we could start diluting our salt down like we used to years ago with some sand, so it's not quite so spendy to treat the roads. And then we can just sweep it up whenever we need to, so it doesn't go down our catch basins.
The sand will leave a little more grit on the road.
Yeah.
And also, with a sweeper, we can clean up our roads so our ponds don't fill up.
Yeah, so that our stormwater ponds won't fill up and we don't get our catch basins full of sand. It'll pay for itself in the long run. Company we used to use for street sweeping retired, so we had to go with somebody else this year and they're quite a bit more expensive than what the other one was.
What did they charge each time that they...
We used to get by for less than two thousand dollars a year and this year it was three thousand, hundred fifty, yeah.
Over three thousand.
Over three thousand, so we only did it once.
Imagine on the whole town or we just did certain sections?
That's the whole town.
The whole town.
But normally, we used to do it twice a year. We'd do it in the spring and then we'd do it again before Montrose Days, at least the area where we had Montrose Days. And we didn't even do that this year because there's so much more.
And they, they don't just come in because they, they do seal coating. And before they start seal coating, they sweep.
Yeah.
And then after seal coating, they sweep.
And then you'd be able to do stuff at your own.
Right.
When you, when you need it, not on someone else's timeframe.
Right.
And we have an operator that would operate it.
Well, they're gonna demonstrate and show everybody how, but I've operated one, so...
You have operated.
There was not much going on at the county meeting, so I'll, I'll show them in the club.
And this one's ready to go, it's all been refurbished.
Just build it.
Yep, well, they're gonna demo it and we find anything with it, you know, they can tune it up or whatever, but... I recommend that we get this one and fix any of the other ones because those other two are pretty beat up and we don't have the money for a new one.
And since it's in the budget, you can tonight, you can direct Wayne to purchase that depending on the demo, if you're okay with that, making that direction.
Is there a garage motor, right?
Oh, I'm hoping it fits across from the fireball. I'm hoping.
He'll find out.
It might not work.
Yeah, otherwise we'll rearrange and it won't fit down below. We'll get it in somewhere. Because it does have a water tank and stuff on it that will freeze, so that's...
Yeah, and it looks like it could be pretty high.
Yeah. They're up there so you can see, but I'm hoping it'll go under because they used to keep fire trucks in that double, so they got tall doors, so...
And that's when part of the point expresses are out too.
Didn't we have that one truck we had to lower the tires to get it in?
That was the red dump truck and that was the shed down below in front of the building on. Then they had to cut the header out of the top and they still turn the exhaust off.
They'd call ready to go.
Yeah, so they dug a hole, they go, so you had to drive down into, and then back up on the inside.
There's a will, there's a way.
Yep.
Well, I'll make a recommendation that if Wayne is satisfied with the demo, then you go ahead and purchase that street sweep before sixty, what was it, sixty-nine?
Sixty-five thousand.
I would agree with that.
We'll find out the contingency of the warranty, extending the six-month warranty?
Yeah.
They're usually pretty good about that.
And that's a big company, so...
They have nothing to lose, it's gonna be there for four months.
Deb, solar.
Our favorite talk.
Farm. We do have someone that's interested in installing a solar farm on the property. Wayne, can you explain? It's, it's the site next to, if you drive in, the brush site's on the right and the...
Yeah, on the left side.
And we have, right now, there'd be eight acres there. If we move a fence, we have potential of ten. And it's a piece of property that's never gonna be used for anything else. The only thing I put this on here for is I wanted you to have the letter showing that Ryan Gritman, the planner, got this, asking, asking about this. And then he today gave me this information, this is just for you to take. They do want to do a letter of intent already to, what the letter of intent is to set forth the basic terms and conditions with the city of Montrose just for negotiating period for thirty days. They're very interested in the site. And then there's some information about them in this other, other document. I have, I have forwarded to James because we could never do something like this without James, the city attorney, looking at it. So, this is just basically an FYI for you tonight and we will have to, I'll bring it to the October thirteenth city council meeting depending on what James says. And what you guys think here today, I mean, you can discuss it. I don't know if you're, if it's something you're interested in, but it would be additional revenue for a piece of property that's gonna sit there forever.
I got a little something too. Shingby called me last Thursday. You got your girls are gone. Called me because they got a letter from these guys, this property they got outside of town, that industrial park. And they want to deal with them on some land on there too, so...
So, we'll have a solar farm out there?
Yeah, so I didn't, like I said, I don't know anything about the logistics of the ground and how big it has to be or what it's zoned for, is you have talked to other people.
Change the zone, it takes five minutes, so...
So, I mean, they just inquired if it was a legit business out of California or was it somebody who would sweep that way.
That's the same outfit as this?
Yep.
Is this the same outfit that we got into that?
No.
How long do they want to lease for?
It's typically thirty, isn't it?
Thirty years?
Twenty-three years.
Yeah, twenty-three years.
Unless it interferes with the comprehensive plan, right?
Yeah, you are setting...
Written in the contract, right?
Right. Our, the way we amended the ordinance has that in there. It's been refused with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I could remember what we changed that ordinance.
We have the right to refusal, to refuse with our comp plan at any point in time.
How about the A U R?
About the A U A R? What about it?
Well, it's gonna interfere with that plan too, right?
No, because it's on our wastewater plant property, so there's...
Yeah, but wasn't there a, in the near future, forty years or whatever, thirty years, we meant there's supposed to be like from seven there up to Highway twelve to bypass going through Montrose. When they built that other solar farm, I remember we had to pay Justin Volvinick seventeen thousand to redo that, but you know... When they built that other solar farm, I remember we had to pay Justin Volvinick seventeen thousand to redo that, but, you know.
No, we did. We did not pay them seventeen thousand to redo. They looked at the A U A R, they looked at the A U A R and it had something to do with the street that goes through there, I think.
Yeah, the main artery is supposed to go through there eventually.
That would be on the north side of the solar farm, the only place you can put a street in.
Yeah.
There's a ditch through the rest of it and then can't go on the other side of our, our property because that's slow. So that'd be way off where the old lift station was.
Well, and that's, in, in the process of the letter of intent, that's all the stuff that they look at, is all of, all of those things. And Ryan will look at all of that.
I think at one time there was a street like Lloyd's saying that would come through from seven. It would, it would connect where the, where the road goes into the plant now. And it would go just to the east, I think, of, so like where the road comes in and goes through the gate and then it turns like this, I think it was gonna shoot out to the north. So even would be, even I think to the east of where the property that they're talking about.
It would still go into that ditch.
But that would go right into where the other solar farm is.
Yeah, and go right into their substation.
So I don't, I think it got moved.
That'd be on the north side.
When they did the update, they did an update to the A U A R.
Taxpayers paid two hundred fifty thousand dollars to have them study it. And then we don't adhere to it anyway.
I think it got updated when they did the five year update.
I don't understand what aren't we adhering to?
Well, following it. That's supposed to be for a guideline, how the cities lined up so you don't have a developer come in and build something here and then, oh geez, it gets busy. Now we can't figure out where the road goes. And so that's what I understand.
From what I understood, the conversation here is it's not interfering with anything because it's a piece of unused land, right? That's just sitting there now. I mean, the most will make some money off.
Well, yeah, but all of the, uh, the studies on unused land right now are farmland.
But there's a difference between land that has potential use value and land that never will. And that land never will. Right? Do you agree with that? And I think, I think you tightened up the regulations to, I mean, in terms of, you know, putting trees and masking and everything and all that stuff.
Well, sure, don't you wanna unify the city?
That was beating to death.
You wanna have another mess like we got out there now?
I'm not giving you an argument. I'm saying, you, you made all those changes. I mean, it was argued infinitum there about all the, you know, protection from view and all that stuff and, I mean, all that stuff was.
Anybody that comes into the city, not just me or.
I understand. I'm not, I'm not arguing the point. I don't, what my point was is that those things were built into the, uh, changes that were made and, you know, anybody wanted to put a solar farm in, so that was accepted by you, right? So we should be good, right?
No.
No?
Because any thriving city don't allow them in the community, in the city limits. Like in Watertown, they tried to get one in there too, but Watertown said no. They built one about six, seven miles south of Watertown. Buffalo don't allow them in the city limits. Montrose is probably about the only one.
Well, maybe then we have something going for us here, right?
Yeah, but there's.
We can be known as just solar city capital.
As far as tax revenue or job, don't create any jobs.
Well.
This is free money though, that's telling to us.
Nothing's gonna be built on that piece of land, that's one point, right?
Well, I don't know. One time they talked about building a city hall there.
I don't think that's gonna happen there.
That's why we bought.
We just bought this property here so we can expand that way.
Only times that I've ever heard city hall was there or.
Or regional.
Out by the regional park.
No, no, no.
No, actually, that was the Taj Mahal out there.
Well, city hall.
That was way.
Charlie, that's three, three on Charlie and Elsie's day, so maybe before you go there.
Yeah.
So, but that land is never gonna be used. And what is it? Ten to fifteen thousand dollars free money? Well, they got in here a thousand dollars a year or acre with a one point five percent annual increase. We would say, no, you need to go higher than that. Because right now, the Verizon tower, we get a five percent increase every year. And they went in at a thousand dollars and that's been there for fifteen years, so they need to up their price a little bit here because they need to get in line with. But I mean, that would be so much.
Actually, they should raise it.
Up to ten.
Up to ten.
They should raise it quite a bit because they don't have to put, have XL put the extra poles and stuff. It's all ready to go, just, just to hook up.
Right, it's already there.
So that's less expense there too for them, so they should.
Right, if they can combine all, uh, two different solar farms, well, let's mean it out to the system.
And how many acres is that piece of land?
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten.
It's eight right now. If we move a fence, it could be ten.
And then that would save us a lot on mowing. It's eight to ten acres of our mowing, which we gained almost out of the water. We put the new out.
I would say start, start the conversation. Why not?
Okay.
You guys think?
Move forward.
Yeah.
Conversation going.
Then the last thing is, is we need to make some amendments to the mayor's appointments because Wayne's doing, um, is now going to the second, um, Thursday, or second, I'd say every month. And then council member, Marjorie needs to know who was going to be on E D A.
What do you recommend, Marjorie?
Well, um.
Well, you for sure. We need two.
We need two, yeah.
It should be the mayor to the first, so, but then I, then I agree you should be on there because you started the thing.
Well, yeah, and, uh, Michelle, are you gonna have time to be going out and talking to, uh, business owners because you're not normally available at night, you know?
At night?
Yeah.
It's easier at night than it is at day.
Business owner?
For me.
I know, but business owners won't be available.
Right, well, I'm typically home by three, so.
I don't know. I wish they could either Ben or Kirby if they're willing and wanting to get involved now.
Kirby's home. You're home in the day, aren't you? In the mornings at least.
Something you'd be interested in, Kirby, or?
Well, if you want it first, you, yeah, I'll do it.
Hey, I'm gonna throw you under the bus here just for a second. Okay, um, you're on the street sweep one?
Street scape.
Whatever that new name is. And the Highway twelve redevelopment, which you haven't made. The Highway twelve?
Safety.
Yeah, the safety.
I have another of the last two.
Mm-hmm, the last couple, so. This is a little more important, so we have to make sure that you.
More important.
Yep.
I'm thinking for at least the first year, Kirby, we're probably gonna have to meet once a month to get, once the freight train starts rolling and that would be a little easier to back off and.
Well, and glad you brought up the, the safety one because I've, uh, had actually a suggestion on that too that, um, with that one, I, I'll go when I'm available. It's tough sometimes on Thursdays when I pick my kit up at three o'clock and I can't get to Independence at three. Where they move the meeting the week before and, um, but I think we should also take Deb off of that meeting. If you or I or both of us are there, I don't know if she necessarily needs to be there. I think it's kind of just extra time her doing stuff that she could be doing around here or.
Well, that's to put her day off.
Right. Or another hour on a Friday that she can do stuff or whatever. That's just kind of my thoughts.
What do you think of, on that one?
Whatever you direct me to do. I've made every single one and I can do that, but. Um, I, I will say, and I think that you will agree with me, that you probably don't need that many people going to it because I, I don't see, in any, every meeting I've been to, I don't see where the benefit is for the city of Montrose.
It's everything that's ba, it's basically Delano to Maple.
Yeah, that's all they're talking about.
It is. And everything that they've discussed, they haven't avoided by anyone. They've gone against every one that the committee's wanted, so.
Unless you keep me on and maybe it's something that, if you want, if you do wanna go off you and I can take turns going or something like that too. I'm just, I don't care. If you ask me to go to every single one, I will. I will. I just, it's one of those meetings and every time I sit there, I think to myself.
Why are we here?
Yeah, because it never has to do, I mean, District three, Claudia gives a report for us for District three, but that really doesn't pertain to us either. Because that's the St. Cloud office and we're District three here in Montrose.
Yeah, we're part of St. Clouds.
So there are different districts starting from Delano on. And they have all the engineers there from Delano on. We only have Claudia.
Right.
That makes sense that we go to that one.
Yeah.
I'd be okay just being alternate on that one too, when you can't make it. I mean, it's kind of on your way home from work, I think, so.
Should I say alternate then?
Whatever happened to the committee where they used to go to Delano, then they'd be in Montrose one month and then they'd be in Holgate.
That's that same committee.
Yeah, it's.
It's had a different.
They just kept it in Delano.
They changed it up when the guy who's in charge now took over doing it. What'd he say, four or five, four or five years ago?
Wendy said they had a different purpose at that time. Because I think she was on there too.
Well, with making for giving businesses and communities.
I don't know what that was. That wasn't our own design.
It was when they were gonna be redoing this whole project is when they developed that.
Did you give a speech at one of those first ones?
Just, um, I gave a, at the State of the City is, address, yes. Um, that was in Delano. Um, but I mean, I know there's been different, you know, Highway twelve redevelopment and Highway twelve this and Highway twelve that, that, you know, some of them are hard to keep track of which ones are which anymore.
Yeah, and I think there was one that dispersed that we had paid into.
I don't know if we paid into or not, but.
Do you want me to put him down as an alternate then?
That's fine.
And then just keep you and I on?
Sure.
Okay, and then.
So back to your E D A. Do you have something, you have something coming up right now, don't you, with the Casey's? Or did you do that last week?
No, we haven't.
Okay, because you and Deb are gonna do that, right?
We're gonna move. Ryan's gonna set up a meeting.
Ryan's gonna set up a meeting with him so we can talk about, you know, what his issues are with the sun change and all that kind of stuff. And then, you know, once I, once I know who else is on the E D A, then, then we're gonna go knocking on the doors, looking for three qualified business people.
We have one, I think.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Did he, did he say yes?
Well, he wanted all that information. Are you taking that to him or am I?
I can take it.
Okay. He wanted to see what it entails, but he was very interested.
Your chamber meeting's this week, isn't it?
Yes.
Is it? So then you can bring it to him then?
I'm not gonna be there. I have a wedding in Wisconsin.
I'm not gonna be there either because I'm gonna have to go to the.
Oh, okay. He doesn't always come to those. I think it would, I think it would be better if we went and talked to him in person outside of that meeting.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, okay. So Kirby, I don't know if you can make it Thursday, but.
Yeah, I drew the short straw.
I'm leaving at eight on Thursday morning for a wedding.
It's at three o'clock.
It's at noon?
No, it's at noon.
I was just trying to check what day it is.
You just gotta let him know if you want lunch.
Yeah, if you want lunch, you let me know because, okay. Okay, and then the only other one is I want to talk a little bit about the Montrose Streetscape Committee because we meet quarterly and I, I don't even think we need to meet that much. Every meeting has been the same thing. The issue with them is we can't do anything on Highway twelve. There's, we'd have to get land acquisition. There's no land to acquire. I know that in the gardens, the guys do not want them planting anymore because it's so hard to maintain them. And, and stuff doesn't live in there because of salt and.
Right, we want an island down the side of the highway.
We can't, we can't.
There's no, there's no rule.
Yeah, well, that's.
And then, um, we talked about doing other majorings here in town, but when we looked at that as staff, we realized that we can't get land acquisition for a lot of those properties either, so. I don't think we need to meet quarterly, but I will do whatever you tell me to do, so I just brought it up for discussion.
Um, do we need one at all?
Well, you could be part of E D A.
No, they, the E D A said, ask them, no, no. They didn't want that.
I know, but.
Well, yeah, but this is, I mean, if, if somebody brings something to the E D A, it's a whole different story than, you know, I'm not gonna go to Patrick at the bank and say, hey, what do you think about flowers, like, you know?
No.
Well, I think if we kept this group maybe twice a year, just because we, they do the planting in the wintertime, they do the planting again in the summertime, just to kind of.
Well, the only ones that do the planting is Sylvia and some, and Paula Thompson and Ellen and so some.
Ellen and Graham don't do it anymore.
But isn't, didn't Ellen just do something?
She just cleaned up the.
She just cleaned up bunch of weeds.
Didn't she add to it?
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, she took some stuff from that here. And they're, they're perennials. I, I know that when I checked on the history of this, the reason why this committee was developed is because you got an initiative foundation grant. And the grant was for the community of Montrose. So they put on Ellen and Graham, who are wonderful, on there. I mean, he's a landscape architect and she works as a landscape for Anna Bay County. And you needed, you needed the whole community to be in there, so they don't live in the city of Montrose. So now they're out here and any decisions that are gonna be made are gonna be made for the city of Montrose. And they're not residents, so that's something else to think about. And I haven't been, I don't find anybody else to fill in on this committee.
It's not rent money anymore now. It's city money now.
It's city money now. And so decisions are made for city money.
Right, but they only make recommendations to the council, right? And we do have spots on our, um, planning and zoning and our park and rec for outside residents. Because it's only.
As long as the majority isn't outside residents.
Right, there, there's only one person on each that can come in. And they, because they only make recommendations. They don't.
But now your majority is actually from outside of.
Yeah, because me too, wouldn't they?
So, I mean, it's almost like, do you, do you really need to have, I mean, if you remember, we had community development and that went to like Park and Rec. We had business retention, that went to E D A. So the only one that was really around anymore was the Highway twelve. Well, now it got changed to Streetscapes. It's not really even Highway twelve anymore, so, you know, it could be, it could just fall under the E D A, like Tom said, if you're, you know, if there's something that needs to be done and you bring it, you discuss it, but, you know, you don't need to go looking for stuff anymore really.
There are programs like that. We did them in Winstead. There's programs, you take the E D A funding, which we have now, and you do grant or loan programs to improve the exterior of your business. There isn't really any way for any of them to really plant if you drive around and, and look, so, I don't know. I just, I just bring it up. I don't think they need to meet quarterly. I think that's way too much because we're talking about the same thing. And really, there isn't, there isn't a whole lot that they can do anymore, so.
Yeah, what about just changing and clarifying the whole setting and just.
That's what it is. That's why it's about Streetscapes.
You know, like these electrical boxes that are in front of all these houses, they're every which way.
We can't do anything with those.
No, we can, can't you have them straighten them out and make them look decent? Has anybody ever tried?
I, I've tried, I've tried the one in front of my house, works for a while to winter and then it's leaning again, so.
The pants.
No, the pants sink. There's some in pants sink.
I mean, my, my little, um.
Does that, that really?
Time war.
Looks like Hector in the city.
When has the next meeting?
That'd be electrical.
It would be.
People would have to.
Well, there's a box and a telephone box over there.
They're full century, like, it's been two or three years and they're just fixing it.
The whole entire plastic.
They don't use, all the sites, they'll use parts of those.
They just keep getting the plastic back up.
They couldn't do what they wanted to do because we often have, it would be.
For two years it's been real.
Cable has. It'd be a ton of million dollars to switch and do what they wanted to do.
Right.
And I know that we talked about, um, last time we met with them when we had that joint meeting, we talked about maybe getting more trees in, but that, again, is something that Wayne and I can work on. We had that in Winstead where they would pick up trees and put in boulevard trees and then the rule was that the residents had to take care of them. They had to water and take care of them. But, um, I don't know, even when we drive around boulevards, there's not, there's not a whole lot.
The problem you have here is that we're on a county road and a state road. And when they plow the roads, they don't go like a street where these guys go twenty miles an hour. They don't do that. And the snow flies. And all the trees that they planted along Highway twelve, if you look on the east side, almost all of them are dead. Because of salt kills them.
That one in Delano?
No, right here.
Well, Delano's are all pretty much dead too.
Yeah, because, you know, like, when I lived in Tyler, they did that on the boulevards, but they, because they have them downtown and then they put like the metal grates around them and you could water them and stuff, but it was downtown and, I mean, it really looked nice, but they went slow like you would if you're on a regular downtown street. Here they come through at 30 miles an hour because they have so much clearance they can throw the snow into, so they make sure they throw it.
Oh, yeah. Then one of them has to come back.
Yeah, so I mean, all the, you know, all the trees die, a lot of the grass died even.
Okay, do we change the meeting times or just abolish this whole committee?
Hey, Wendy?
Well, I...
How about we just ask, send an email to the people on that committee, just letting them know what our thoughts are? And then just say what their direction is, they know that we can't do anything that they wanted us to do. And then just see what they're, what they perceive that group to do.
I'm sure they have other things to do, you know?
Yeah, so...
My opinion would be a biannual, but...
Yeah.
Keep, just keep a little bit of a touch with what's going on, what I mean? Four times a year down to two?
Yep.
So how many people do they have on that committee?
Three.
Three, and two of them outsiders?
Sylvia, Graham and Ellen.
Yes, two of them.
That goes against the grain, but then...
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Should be simple.
I don't think the great Graham's, Graham and Ellen's hearts, I don't think, they have to little meeting. Probably not.
Well, I mean, if we had hundreds, thousands of dollars to spend on their hearts, probably it would be an...
Yeah.
Here's your pot of plant for this year.
Did you hear what the E D A in Delano just recently did?
No.
They, you know, that quick shop? They just purchased that.
How did it?
Six hundred thousand, I think.
What did they...
I have to clarify the quick shop, you know, the gas station next to the dairy? The E D A, the Delano E D A just purchased that.
And what are they gonna do with it?
I think tomorrow they should. It's in the paper, I haven't read the whole thing, but, yeah.
Anything else on here that you wanted to change?
Yeah, she was just supposed to call.
I think we're good. Are you still on the Montrose days?
I'm still, probably till 11:30.
Anything else, anybody else? I think the rest of it was okay.
I think we're all done. Okay. Are we expected to be at the meeting tonight?
No, it's just open house. Wayne and I are gonna be there.
Do you have any information about it?
And what was it about?
The Highway 12 project.
The 2022 project.
The mid-engineers are gonna be here and they're gonna have picture booths and...
It could be interesting.
Could be.
Circles and arrows and curvy red on bench one.
It was supposed to be 2021 and now it's something that's 2022, so... So, Tom? Before we go with your updates on E D A, when you start meeting with people, can you send out like a update as to what's going on, or have Deb send it out, actually? Whatever, that's good too.
I wanna cut the tree down.
I do. Well, I mean, if you just shoot it, even an email, it's paperless there too, so... What are you guys, meeting with Deb, did you say? I missed that.
We haven't set up, you know, we lost our planner, so we...
Oh, yeah.
Got a new planner.
He has a, I gave him a list of stuff that we, well, we met with Steve Gritman and Miles and they have a list of what Ryan's gotta dig into. The Brummer Group one is being led up by a different person in their office because he has contact, lots of contact with the Brummer Group. What do you wanna call them, the main men, who do all the behind the scenes? I think they said his name is Nate, and he's, he knows all of them very well, so he's gonna take that part of it over.
Can you give us an update to us, what's going on with Sid's property on the road here?
Don't know, but I can have Ryan...